I call the meeting of the Minnetonka City Council to order for the regular meeting July 18th, 2022, 5:30 PM. I'd like to welcome everybody here today. Just so you know, this is not the public hearing for the city budget that's coming up, so I expect you all to come back for that. That would be wonderful. No tongue-in-cheek comment. Call the rule.
Evans?
Here.
Janser?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Pittner?
Here.
Padraig O'Leary?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
And as we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like to invite Boy Scout Wes Hoadley to come up to the dais to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. This is the start of a process or program or tradition for the next four years where I invite Cub Scouts, Girl Scouts, groups and organizations that would like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And it just so happens that Wes is father, Dan is a Colonel and the Commander of the 5th Bomb Wing. They just recently moved to Minnetonka. So Wes, if you could come up to the dais there and everybody rise and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Wes, and thank you, Colonel Hoadley, for coming to our meeting and welcome to Minnetonka. If there's a merit badge for saying the Pledge of Allegiance at a city council meeting, you'd be the first one to receive it, Wes. So thank you again. Mayor's report. It's not much to report. Just I've had a couple of board meetings, Chamber of Commerce, Chamber EDC Board meeting and meeting with some city staff and legislators on flood protection. In general, emails, text messages, voicemails, phone conversations over the last couple of weeks. That is my mayor's report. Oh, the proclamation, which is why you're all here. Next is the pro-- not most of you are here. Proclamation for the Minnetonka High School Girl Soccer Team. And it reads as follows: "The mayor proclaims July 18th as Minnetonka High School Girl Soccer Team Day. Whereas the Minnetonka Public Schools is a proud institution featuring outstanding education and extracurricular opportunities, and whereas the Minnetonka High School Girl Soccer Team has a tradition of excellence that includes winning multiple state championships and continued that success in 2022 by winning the state Class A championship for the second straight season through a combination of determination, talent, and teamwork. Now, therefore, do I, Tom Ross, Mayor of Minnetonka, North Dakota, hereby proclaim July 18th, 2022, and it's Minnetonka High School Girl Soccer Team Appreciation Day, and encourage all Minnetonka High School residents, Minnetonka residents, to celebrate the Majette's 2022 State Class A Championship and recognize the team members and coaches for their season of excellence that shines a spotlight on the successful academic and athletic programs organized and managed by the Minnetonka Public Schools. So come on up to the dais and we'll take some pictures and I'll present you with your proclamation."
Thank you. Thank you.
Let's move on to the city manager's report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. As always, city manager memo is available in the council packet. It is a little light this time. I was out this last week with some personal time with family, had some family events. But I did also want to report officially that last week staff did receive official notice of the, to begin the process of exercising the option of purchasing city property with regards to the port. That would be LPND 1 or the chamber. So we did receive that official notice. It doesn't require any council action because the process is outlined within the contract and the agreement. So staff will follow the timelines and the process outlined there. But I did at least want you to know publicly that we had received that, that that continues to move forward in a positive fashion. And we're excited for the progress that's happening with that project. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council has with regards to the reports or anything else under my purview.
Any questions of the city manager? If not, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Alderman Mark.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a special rule regarding the order of business and move the city council vacancy appointment to the next agenda item.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Steve. Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, call the rule.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraig O'Leary?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
So that moves up in the action items, 7.1, city council vacancy. Members of the council have received 13 letters of application to, for the vacant seat on the city council. At this time, I would ask if there were any questions of any of the candidates from council members. Any questions of any candidates from the council? If not, what are the wishes of the council? Alderman Pittner?
Mayor, I move the appointment of Roscoe Striely to the vacancy.
There's a motion to approve Roscoe Striely. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Steve. Discussion? Any discussion? Paul?
Again, excited to see the number of candidates that have put their names in the hat. I'm excited to see this. I hope there's a special election in November and I hope to see 13 more people with their names on the ballot, so.
Any further discussion? Mark?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I think it's important that we note that this is a very short window for this appointment. In other words, it's for a little over 90 days till we get to the November election. And so I agree with Alderman Pittner that I hope we have a number of people running in November. I think that would speak well for the community. I'd like to commend all the people that sent us letters and applied for this vacancy. I think that also speaks well of the community and of people wishing to be involved in city business. So, and gratitude to all of those folks.
Any other comments? Discussion? Go ahead, Carrie.
So I won't be supporting that motion. I think Roscoe brings a lot of skills to the table. One of them is not empathy or care for vulnerable people or city staff. Like to remind people of the New Yorker article in 2021 where, I'm just reading it for quote, "Roscoe Strile, a 41-year-old local banker who has spent two terms in the state legislature and lost a run for city council, was an outspoken skeptic. In his Twitter feed, masks were BS, Fauci is an idiot, experts were clowns and frauds. Klute, Lisa Klute, he told me, was a not-so-smart lady who led a team of unelected bureaucrats. In an October Facebook post, he wrote, 'The worst-run health district in the state of North Dakota is the first district health in Minnetonka, an embarrassment and a laughing stock.'" And then we all remember his famous tweet when he was in the legislature, which called people who disagreed with him libtards and has used the name Pocahontas three times in a derogatory way since November of 2017. So I believe that speaks to character and a lack of caring about our community, about the people who are doing hard work in our community and people who disagree with them. So I cannot support that motion.
Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. I also wanted to join Carrie. It's not pleasant to say negative things about people in the community, particularly people who've had leadership roles. And I think in many ways, Roscoe would be a very good candidate. He has extensive experience in the legislature. He's closely politically connected with the governor and important state leaders. He has the background in finance. He's in business. He's a banker. That cuts both ways for me personally. But I think the previous statements and the attitudes that Carrie spoke about, in my view, are disqualifying, actually. You know, one of the things you learn on the city council is you don't always get your own way and we all have to work together and we need to be nonpartisan. We also need to be respectful of people, even though we may disagree with them. I found the comment, I have a hard time saying this word even, quote, "libtard," close quote, extremely offensive. I've worked with people with developmental disabilities my whole life. And to use such language to refer to one's political opponents, I think, is totally unacceptable. I feel bad about voting against Roscoe because, again, on paper, he has a lot of qualifications and he made it into my group, my group of top candidates. But I think, given that kind of lack of respect, I can't support him. I also want to point out, too, that the article Carrie talked about was regarding the issue of the pandemic and precautions, safety precautions. And I want to point out that we have a person sitting here in the dais who was quite skeptical of some of the things, that being our mayor. And yet he expressed his skepticism as a personal opinion. He was always respectful of people and he went along with the majority. He and I disagreed fairly strongly about some of these things, but I felt we did so in a good spirit. And again, I never saw that kind of blaming of people. So I think we can disagree with one another and still be respectful. But I haven't seen that kind of respect that I would expect to see, would want to see very much out of a member of this council. So it's not the issue, it's the attitude that I'm concerned about. And I think at some point, again, although I'm reluctant to say, speak negatively about people, at some point, I think we need to take a stand in our body politic. You know, at the national level, we see too much conflict. We see too much polarization. We see government being stuck and a lot of disrespect for other people, a lot of very heated rhetoric. And we have no control, really, of what happens in Washington. None of us here are millionaires. We can't influence things except through our solitary votes, our sole votes. But I think when it comes at the state level, we have to do what we can to try to restore some civility and some respect in government. And I think it starts here at the council level.
Thank you. Any other comments? I guess my comment--
Mayor?
Yes, yes. Lisa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to just share my kind of perspective on some of the feedback that we have received from citizens since the 13 individuals sent us their names and their information. And from the way that I have been sensing things, a lot of it has been partisan-directed. And a lot of people believe that whoever is chosen out of this group of 13 will be the swing vote on a very contentious upcoming budget. And whether it is Mr. Striely or someone else is chosen, I'm hoping that we do not get to the point of being a partisan body. We are elected as nonpartisan individuals and representatives of the citizens of the city of Minnetonka. And I just personally don't care to get into whether an individual is very conservative or very liberal. I'm most concerned about how they're going to represent the citizens of Minnetonka. So I'm hoping that that is taken into consideration tonight as we vote and definitely, very importantly, taken into consideration when people go to vote in November. Thank you.
Any other comments? Since becoming mayor, I have had the opportunity to learn about a bunch of projects. And one of them is flood control. And Minnetonka has got an opportunity to fast-track flood control. And, you know, if we were sitting at a poker table, I'd push all my chips in and I'm saying, "I'm going all in. I'm going to do what I can, work my tail off, and put the people in place who can fast-track flood control." That's going to save the state over $40 million and it's going to save residents of the Surris Basin millions and millions of dollars in flood insurance premiums, if we can fast-track it. Our opportunity to fast-track that is now with the upcoming legislature. Steve, your comments, talking about how Washington is contentious, how North Dakota politics can be contentious, and it was and it is. But in my two years as a council, we've been able to work together. We haven't been political. We've seen allies come together on various issues that really absolutely surprise people. I've had the opportunity to visit with Roscoe. And I am convinced that Minnetonka needs Roscoe on our team to help us fast-track, to help us save the money that we can save in this legislative session. I've had some heart-to-hearts with him. And you can't change the past, you can only build on the future. And the future is bright. And I'm going to support him because I think we need him at the table to fast-track flood protection, along with his expertise when it comes to tearing apart and working through a budget and economic development issues. It's just a very strong skills he's bringing to the table. And that's why I'll support that. Any other comments? Let's call the rule.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraig O'Leary?
No.
Ross?
Yes.
Evans?
No.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
So at this time, it has been approved that Roscoe Striely will be our next city councilman. So if Roscoe, if you want to step up to the dais, we'll read you your oath of office. Is your right hand? I state your name.
I, Roscoe Striely.
Do solemnly swear that I'll support the Constitution of the United States?
I do solemnly swear that I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of North Dakota?
And the Constitution of the state of North Dakota.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of the city alderman for the city of Minnetonka?
And I will faithfully discharge the office of the city alderman for the city of Minnetonka?
North Dakota.
North Dakota.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, now we go back to 5.1. Next item on the agenda is 5.1, a public hearing, rezoning a portion of the Keys amended plat. So now the public hearing is open for anyone who wants to vote or speak in favor or against the item on the agenda. Second call for any comments for or against. Not what are the wishes of the council? Paul?
Mayor, I move that we close the public hearing and approve the item with recommendations from staff.
We have a motion to close the public hearing? Seconded by Janser. Any discussion? If not, call the rule.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraig O'Leary?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Striely?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
5.2 is a public hearing, hearing, a portion of the Southwest Knolls addition. So at this time, if you're in attendance and would like to speak for or against the rezoning? Anybody? Second call for speaking for or against. If not, what are the wishes of the council? Mark?
Mr. Mayor, I move we close the public hearing and approve the item.
Is there a second?
Second.
Steve?
Yes.
Any discussion? No discussion? Call the rule.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraig O'Leary?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Striely? Evans?
Yes.
Next, we have our consent. We have 18 items on the consent agenda. Are there any items that need to be pulled? Any items that need to be pulled? If not, what are the wishes of the council?
Mayor, I move approval on the remaining items.
We have a motion to approve remaining items. Is there a second? Second by Roscoe. Any discussion? Call the rule.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraig O'Leary?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Striely?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Next up on the agenda is we jump to 7.2 in our action items, which is the special election to fill the council vacancy. Just a resolution. What are the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
Moved by Pittner. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Steve. Any discussion? Any discussion? Let's call the rule.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraig O'Leary?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Striely? Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Moving on, 7.3 was pulled from the agenda. Moving on to 7.4, approval of the Bank of North Dakota Payne's Loan Participation for LPND 1 LLC. What are the wishes of the council? Motion to approve by Roscoe. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Pittner. Any discussion? Any discussion? Go ahead.
I just want to point out for the council and for the public, so we do typically participate in payne loans significantly. We have a program. There's a program through Payne's, through the Bank of North Dakota, that basically allows interest on the loan to be bought down. That typically requires some local financing that we've been funding through the Magic Fund for payne loan applications. However, this one is a little bit different in that because the city has already approved its arrangement with the chamber with regards to the port, this loan is in incorporation with the efforts at the port. And the Bank of North Dakota is recognizing the city's contribution already. So it's being counted as an in-kind contribution at this point due to the loan forgiveness that we have set up already. So this is not your typical payne loan agreement that we would normally have. So I just wanted to point that out on behalf of the council and the public. being counted as an in-kind contribution at this point due to the loan forgiveness that we have set up already. So this is not your typical PACE loan agreement that we would normally have, so I just wanted to point that out on behalf of the council and the public. So the city council is not approving any additional investment over and above what you've already approved in previous actions at previous council meetings regarding this project.
Thank you. Any further comments, questions? Call the rule.
Striley?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraig O'Leary?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Moving on, seven point five, approval of release of claim document related to the airport snowplow destroyed by fire. What are the wishes of the council?
Move.
Moved by Steve? Second?
Second.
By Mark? By Janser? Any discussion? Any discussion from council? If not, call the rule.
Padraig O'Leary?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Striley?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Moving on to section eight, personal appearances. This is a time to where if you have something to address to the council, you can step up to the podium and address the council. We generally give five minutes for presentation.
I might need a watch because I'm known for going past it. Now, am I allowed to hand out for all of you and then just submit it for meeting minutes? Is that okay? Hi, everyone. My name is Bruselda Hernandez, and I live in Minot, and I work for Suris Basin Planning Council located at Eighteenth Second Street Northeast here in Minot. Mr. Mayor Ross and members of the council, I am the Executive Director for Suris Basin Planning Council, or SBPC. We serve North Dakota Region Two consisting of seven counties, including Ward County. I'm here today on behalf of Suris Basin to address the misinformation currently circulating regarding our organization, the Business Accelerator Fund Program, or the BAF, and our borrowers. First, I'd like to stress that we understand the importance of community engagement and decision-making. Public participation facilitates fair, equitable, and sustainable outcomes. It is equally important to ensure that the public and decision-makers are presented with accurate information. Therefore, we'd like to assure the Minot City Council and members of the public of the following. The BAF program was created in 2019 to serve as a community match source for the Bank of North Dakota, or BND, FlexPace and PACE programs. Prior, the city of Minot did not have a program that could be used to meet the community match requirement for the FlexPace program. The community match is in a form of a loan. Borrowers must repay the loan with interest. It is not granted. SBPC received funding from the Magic Fund in 2019 and in 2022 for the BAF program. Funding was made directly to our organization, not to Minot Chamber EDC nor any other entity. The BAF program allows, follows all BND guidelines. If a project is approved by BND, then it qualifies for the program. All eligible projects must go through a due diligence process managed by SBPC. To date, we have not denied any BAF applications. Individuals and businesses apply directly to our organization, and we provide free technical assistance to all applicants. Our staff reviews applications and presents them to our loan review committee for final approval or denial. Minot Chamber EDC does not have the authority or influence over our programs, including the BAF program. Each member of our committee signs a conflict of interest when they join. As part of this agreement, no member of the committee nor any of their immediate family members may receive SBPC funding while they are a member. We have local lenders and business owners on our committee because of their qualifications and because they serve as advocates for our programs. Each member is required to abstain from voting on any project in which they have a conflict of interest. In 2019, our board approved changes to the conflict of interest to remove the two-year waiting period of our programs, except the Suris Basin Revolving Loan Fund, or the RLF. The Economic Development Administration requires a two-year waiting period to access RLF funds. The board found it unnecessary to keep this waiting period in place for other programs, including the BAF program. Based on feedback from applicants, lenders, and other stakeholders, in 2020, our board granted the committee authority to approve or deny loans, except BAF loans. The board granted the committee this authority in August of 2021, subject to approval from the city of Minot. The sole purpose of this change was to remove barriers to applicants, requiring less time for final approval of the projects. On September 20, 2021, Minot City Council approved an amendment to our agreement which included changes to the approval-denial process. Our board reviews and accepts loan status reports at our scheduled meetings. The report includes a list of borrowers and loan amounts. We report to the city of Minot on a quarterly basis and provide a copy of this report. Kevin Black, co-owner of Creedence Properties, served on our committee from October 2016 through October 2020. Ryan Ackerman, co-owner of Axel Group, has never served on our board nor committee. Creedence Properties supplied for BAF funding in June of 2021 and was approved by a board in August of 2021. This is nearly one year after Kevin Black resigned from our committee. Our conflict of interest form only applies to our board members, committee members, and staff. The form does not apply to individuals serving on the Minot Chamber EDC board, including Ryan Ackerman and Kevin Black. Therefore, Axel Group and Creedence Properties were eligible to apply for and receive BAF funding. Our programs and process were designed to ensure that every business and individual who qualifies can access funding. We hope that our program impact report provided to all of you and letters of support received from some of our borrowers and partners demonstrate this. We remain committed to the businesses and individuals that have invested a lot of money, time, and energy into building a thriving community. We will gladly submit the letter sent to Minot City Council, which contains the information shared today, our letters of support, and our program impact report to be included in the meeting minutes if it's allowed. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mayor Ross. The institution I work at has worked with Suris Basin a lot over the last decade or so here, and this is one of the best institutions we have for financing startup businesses, growing businesses that we have in the city. They do an absolutely fantastic job. So any negative comments they should receive should be discarded because they're not true. This is a great organization. Mr. Black and Mr. Ackerman are two stand-up individuals who have done a tremendous amount for our community, so I wholeheartedly support Suris Basin and those two individuals.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Paul?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I like all those comments and as well as understand that the FlexPace program isn't something that Suris Basin cooked up. This is an idea, the Revolving Loan Fund was an idea that came from the International Economic Development Committee study that was done, I believe, in 2018. So again, these are individuals that are just doing the work, carrying the water, and getting these projects across the finish line, and they're picking them up and providing a service for our community. So again, it takes a lot of people to make these projects like this, like these groups have done, and these organizations have helped come to fruition. It takes a lot of people to get those to become a reality, and I'm thankful for all the work that's been done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Steve?
Thanks. I appreciate the report you're giving us and your attempt to correct the record. I also wanted to note and thank you for that detailed letter you sent all of us outlining many of these same things. I think it really should be included with our minutes as part of your presentation. Do have two comments, though. I guess the first comment is that perhaps at some point, somebody, maybe it's our staff, maybe it's you and MAC EDC, could put together a very brief listing of these kinds of programs. To be honest with you, I'm getting a little overwhelmed. I'm not in the money business like some of us, but, you know, we have FlexPace, we have Magic Fund, we have this, we have that. And it's confusing sometimes as to, you know, what these programs are. So if someone came up with a one-page listing of various ways of funding businesses, I think that would be very helpful. And then maybe if the sequence of processing these applications is not readily apparent, is maybe a very brief flow chart as to what goes in what process. One of the things I was reassured about when you sent us the letter was that there are a lot of other organizations involved. There are banks and presumably bankers that are exercising their due diligence about loans. There are people in the State Economic Development Department. You know, if we were simply the sole source of funding for new organizations, I would be very, very concerned about potential bias, potential self-dealing, if you will. If there are more organizations involved, I'm much less concerned. Also, the fact that we're asking for loans now or giving loans rather than grants and are inserting clawback provisions in those contracts, I think that's a very good thing. So, you know, if someone could put together a brief list. In connection with that, when I surf the internet, as my wife accuses me of doing too much of the time, I often go to other cities' websites. And one of the things I frequently see is on the main page is "How do I start a business in Bozeman?" or wherever. And I know we're going to be revising our website, but I think that's something that I'm concerned about is the average person, an entrepreneur who's living here or thinking of moving here or starting a business here, I want to make it as easy as possible for them to get into this system. And I don't know that they need to know about FlexPace versus Magic Fund versus what. I think they just need to know that there are people who are available with resources, with financial resources, with expertise, and that they need maybe to start with an accountant or a banker or a lawyer. And then, and I think we've done this before to some extent, we've trained those people, we've given them educational materials and programs as to the ins and outs and what kinds of specific sources of funding are available. But I think it should be easier for the average person to find out where they can go. They don't need to know all the details. But I think it should be as seamless and friction-free as possible for people to get resources. The resources that we have are significantly better than they were many years ago, and I think the oversights are much higher quality. The final thing I'd say, apart from, you know, sharing information and making things easier to access, is that I think we do need to pay attention to issues of bias. When I wrote you back, I said I'm not just concerned about, you know, potential appearances of impropriety or potential conflicts of interest, which are always there, and I think we need to take them seriously. But also how being a small town may affect our decision-making. Again, if there are more people with eyes on the project or on the proposal, I feel more comfortable. But I think we need to make good decisions, and if you're intimately involved in an organization, I think it's harder to, in these kinds of things, it's harder to be objective and unbiased. As a scientist, I'm very concerned about bias, especially my own bias or potential bias. So, you know, I think we do need to be careful about that. I think there's a continuum here. On the one hand, if we're too rigid, we reduce the opportunity for entrepreneurs and successful business people to offer expertise, to offer knowledge, and help out applicants and help out organizations. On the other hand, if we don't have any guidelines, then I think we make ourselves susceptible to charges of cronyism and insider dealing, and those can happen at any time. Although, again, the oversight procedures have improved dramatically since we started the Magic Fund. I think we always have to be mindful of that. So it's not just, you know, ethical issues, it's also quality of decision-making. If you're giving money to a buddy of yours, it may not be your business, but I think we have to be very careful, and hopefully this is where the private enterprise people come in, and they don't want to lose their money either. So just to kind of make sure we periodically reevaluate what that balance is between transparency and, you know, very strict standards, and also facilitating and making it easier for people to apply for things, and taking advantage of the expertise of the entrepreneurs we do have, and the people who have built successful businesses and work in them. So I'm pleased with what you're telling us, and would encourage you again to, maybe in conjunction with our staff, to put together a very brief outline, and also to work on making it easier for the average citizen to find out that there really are tremendous resources available for them now. If they come up with good ideas and are motivated and gonna work hard, I think we have a lot we can support them with.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak? If not, let's move to nine point... Oh, come on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Jennifer Ackman from the Minot Airport. Just a reminder that tomorrow, we're going to be doing an active shooter drill at the airport. We're asking that the public, if you don't have a reason business at the airport, you avoid the area from the hours of 8:30 in the morning. We'll be starting with the tabletop, and we should be done by about 10 o'clock tomorrow morning. This will be done in conjunction with the city police department, the Transportation Security Administration, and the Highway Patrol.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Let's move on to nine point one, MAC EDC semi-annual presentation.
Breka Kramer, the President and CEO of the Minot Area Chamber EDC. Thank you for having me here this evening on behalf of our organization. Part of our contract with the city of Minot is to twice a year present our progress in meeting not only the contractual applications, but also what we're working on moving forward. Had an opportunity to be here last month to talk about our 2023 budget request, so I won't spend a lot of time on those items, but I do want to highlight the things that have been accomplished in the first half of this year. So, thank you, Derek, for pulling up the presentation. So as far as with that, I always want to stress kind of the vision of our organization. Our vision is to be the go-to organization for our business community to drive key initiatives and strengthen our economy. We worked really hard in 2020 in merging the former Minot Area Development Corporation and Minot Area Chamber of Commerce. And a lot of the discussion at that time was centered around the mission, vision, and values. So in your packets, we did provide a full report. You can certainly take a look at those. In 2021, when we merged the two organizations, we spent some time reviewing those, and as part of our strategic planning process, we'll be looking at those again this year. I always want to highlight our Board of Directors. We're very fortunate to have a volunteer board that is committed to helping not only move the economic development efforts forward, which are tied to the work we do at the city of Minot, but also our other key initiatives. We have a lot of moving parts to the Chamber EDC. Obviously, the city funds the economic development side and also supports Minot Air Force Base. But as far as with it, I just want to highlight our volunteer members, and then maybe note a couple of the key committees that support specifically to the contract. We have, you guys have heard through the discussions over the last few months, moving intermodal forward, LPND, which is the Logistics Park in North Dakota. It's an effort that is two decades underway, and we're very fortunate that we're seeing success in that arena in continuous intermodal operations. We do have an LPND committee that meets regularly to kind of work those logistics. The other committee to highlight would be Task Force 21, which is specific to supporting not only Air Force, Air Force Global Strike Command and the missions at Minot Air Force Base, but also is just our overall active committee in those areas. So I'll highlight a couple of the things tied to some of the initiatives that are a part of our report. The first is the strategic plan. I'm happy to support that we're on track, or report that we're on track for the development and implementation of this plan. We plan to have that in place by the end of this year, which will take some of the key performance indicators that we're metrics and what we're monitoring in economic development, and we'll be reviewing that through the strategic planning process. I know we've had some outreach to some of you in that process, and we'll continue to move that forward. You'll hear more about that in our final report. With a couple of other efforts, I'm really excited to report on these. So in the past decade, you know, economic development is one of those things, I think, Harold, as a city manager, one of the first presentations you did was talking about the city's role in economic development and our role as an organization. One of the things that we were really focused in on this year, and thanks to Mark Lyman, who's our economic development specialist, he's been very active in this space, and made a contact with an actual site selector. And I will say, over the past decade, we've hosted consultants, we've hosted businesses, but we actually brought in a senior vice president and economic incentives practice leader for Colliers International. And we've already had an opportunity for some projects to present the Logistics Park in North Dakota and also some opportunities. and also some opportunities here in Minot that could help with distribution and other functions. So we're going to continue to move that forward. I won't spend a lot of time because the report's in here, but I also do want to highlight, and I should thank the City of Minot back to the Colliers visit. Thank you to those that were able to participate. I know that it's important to keep those connections, and we were able to answer a lot of their detailed questions with the clients that they represent. So thank you to those from the city that participated. Going on to the BRNE, which is our Business Retention and Expansion Program. Our goal throughout the year is to reach 65% of those primary sector entities. It includes engineering, energy, manufacturing, value-added ag, and other sectors. And I'm happy to report we're on track for that. I will say, since we've implemented this program over the last couple of years, you're going to start to see, as we report at the end of the year, some benchmarks. But on a positive note of those that we've met with, we're seeing businesses expanding. They're providing insights. And as we continue this program, we can use that research and information to show, are we growing, are we declining, where are there opportunities? And if you take a look at that report, there's some really interesting facts tied to the quality of life and some of the things that we're hearing. And I'd certainly encourage you to dive in and look at that further. When it comes to attracting new opportunities, the one I most, you know, all these efforts are great and underway. Already mentioned the LPND, the Logistics Park in North Dakota. We are working with the city on the Chrissy Grant. There was $800,000, 400 was federal funding, and 400 with a local or state match. And as far as with it, we've already received the Market Assessment Report. That's complete. We're working through the environmental assessment, and that's about 99% complete. And conceptual designs for the rail and non-rail properties served by LPND, which would be on the north side where we're operating intermodal, the land that we own in that space. We're on track to complete that project, the majority of that by the end of this year. So everything is moving forward there. But I am happy to report that we do have the Market Assessment Report and close on the environmental. When it comes to the partnerships, I just want to highlight. I've already talked about Task Force, but Alderman Padrigula tonight brought up supportive businesses in our community, entrepreneurs, and in that space. And one of the things that we launched over this last year was Startup Minot, which is a couple of things. It's not only a program that we have three cohorts throughout the year that we bring in entrepreneurs and take them through a course that gets them connected with those specifically, actually, that you mentioned, but also does allow, on a monthly basis, for any individual in our community to join us at the Carnegie Center on a Thursday morning. You can certainly check our website for when those meetings are held. We're fortunate, we just had a big entrepreneur from our area, from Velva, present this past week and packed the room. It's really a great opportunity to connect entrepreneurs and those moving forward with business initiatives with those that have experience. And what's great is this very successful entrepreneur has offered up her time to help those in our community. So you're seeing a trend of, we see the great investment into Minot right now, but also small businesses. And we do have a program in place through Startup Minot and our partnerships there to help support entrepreneurs and those in the business sector. Whether you take the cohort or not, that is something that's new, that our staff time is being dedicated towards. Also, under attracting new opportunities, just want to, we're always asked about trade shows. This is just a quick snapshot. Obviously, we're rolling off of COVID, so a couple of years of things kind of being held back. But we do have partnerships, and I believe I highlighted this last month in our request for the budget. We have partnerships across the state that we're working with on a regular basis. And I'll get into that in kind of our next slide. But also, too, as we're looking at these new opportunities, I know you, as a governing body, supported the Tiff District that was brought forward for the Big Embassy Building. We are really looking to make sure that those economic development tools are available for those that are investing in our community. And we're happy our board certainly supports those tools. When it comes to strategic partnerships, I do want to spend a little bit of time here. Since the Magic Fund has been discussed in Service Space and Planning Council, I know it has submitted a letter to you. I just want to maybe highlight our role as far as with the applications. So in the Minot Area Chamber EDC, specific to the Service Space and Planning Council request, we are the entity that felt very strongly about supporting the Flex Pay program. Flex Pay is something that Baycom North Dakota has been offering to communities across our state for a long time. We were one of, the Minot area was one of the only areas that really wasn't utilizing this program. Some communities, Velva, for example, their community for the Community Match does it as a grant. Service Space and Planning Council, through their program, does it as a loan that's repayable and comes back and putting dollars into our community. But just I want to be clear on kind of our role as the Chamber EDC. So we support the Service Space and Planning Council request to the Magic Fund to access the, you know, these type of programs. We, I just want to also make it clear that no officer or board member from our organization has, we have never brought forward a request specifically to help benefit them directly through a Magic Fund request through the Minot Area Chamber EDC. And as Brazelda mentioned earlier, the Service Space and Planning Council, once it's already approved through Magic Fund, we bring forward that request. But at that time, we don't have any governance over their process. We've done that for conflict of interest, but also, too, it's not our program to administer. They work closely with the businesses and the bankers. Our role is to ensure that there's funding in place for a community match that puts businesses in our community on a level playing field with other communities in our state. So that's our piece as far as with it. And as mentioned, we don't have any oversight over their request. I know that the guidelines have been in discussion. We certainly are willing to talk about those each year. Frankly, we see a lot of requests for the Magic Fund that just don't make it through. That's part of our screening process. There are certain things within the guidelines that we ensure those regulations and those guidelines are met before bringing something forward. We did bring a request forward earlier this year, but before that, there's been a little bit of a gap in qualifying requests. So just want to call that out. And then when we look at some of the other reports that we do, we provide on a monthly basis the economy at a glance. We also respond to a number of RFPs that are put out through the state of North Dakota. On a regular basis, the Department of Commerce receives requests looking for communities to bring a business to a service. And we work directly with the Department of Commerce on those. So throughout the year, we'll touch a number of those. And then Alderman Padrigula, I feel like you teed up a couple of the talking points here without us even talking. So as far as with that, the other part, you mentioned the list of programs to support business. We work very closely with the Bank of North Dakota, the Department of Commerce, and also track, too, what's available legislatively. For example, the state legislator has automated tax credits, other type of programs that are out there that certainly can help businesses move forward. And a lot of times in our RFPs, we customize those responses, but we do actually have a list of the programs and are more than happy at any time to sit down and talk to a business and help align them with what makes the most sense. What's great is we do work closely, even locally, with entities like Service Space and Planning Council so that we, if it's not our program, we know who to link them up with. And so we can certainly provide that to you, Alderman Padrigula and City Council, some of the programs and contacts that we have in that space. We're more than happy to do that. We have that available now. And then when we talk about the strategic partnership in developing policies, we do on a regular basis not only meet with projects that you're moving forward here. Tiff is a great example. But we also do work closely with the state of North Dakota on a lot of their programs. So another part of it, and I know you guys are in the process of updating your website. We're constantly looking at what our online visibility is. I know that the city manager, one of the programs he brought forward was an experience, LOAS, for example, which is the Location One Information System. That is something that we've implemented to showcase the properties that are available in our community, working closely with the realtors and developers, those that are maybe the first touch point to ensure that those larger properties are available on a platform that economic developers use. So that is implemented. And then we do work to keep our website up to date with some of the other things listed here. One of the newer initiatives that I do want to call out, it's not per se under the scope, but the Chamber EDC has been a lead partner with the local and state efforts tied to workforce development. We know that workforce is affecting not only our community, but the state of North Dakota, so we're working really closely there. We are the lead on the RWIP program. And you'll see some of the things we're looking at here. That application is due at the end of the month, but that is additional $1.8 million that will come to our region that we will help with workforce initiatives and distribute those funds. The other thing that is new that we rolled out with the Department of Commerce in the state of North Dakota, the governor's office, is the Talent Attraction Program that they have. It's kind of the Find the Good Life 2.0. It's an older program that they've really revamped. They've partnered with the National Firm Roll Call. And great news I can share with you this evening. It doesn't fit within the June cutoff report, but the very first individual to access the program through North Dakota and move to a community in our state was in Minot. The individual moved here, had no North Dakota ties. We met with him, got him linked up with an employer. And I'm happy to say that we exceeded all their expectations as far as with it. What's cool about this program, when the Department of Commerce and Roll Call came here, we sat down with partners, not only HR entities impacting, whether it be healthcare, education, and some of our community partners. We also sat down with the City of Minot, Visit Minot, and others. And what's great about this is we're really working collaboratively and together to how do we attract people and how do we tell our story? So this is a new program. We have success right out of the chute, and we're happy to be North Dakota's kind of champion as far as with it. And we'll be developing, Mark Lyman and I, from our team, are community champions. And that's something that they just rolled out. And we'll have more to report at the end of the year. And then just maybe to call out a couple of other efforts we're tied in with. The state chamber has a, they set their policy positions. We are linked in. I personally am chairing the Policy Committee for Workforce. And then we've been at the table with the governor, Lieutenant Governor, and also the Human Services regarding childcare and what are those solutions for our state. So with that, everything else is included in the packet. I tried to cover all the activities. We have a lot of great things going on, as high-level as I could. Certainly happy to answer any questions, but I'll pause there.
Any questions? Steve?
Thank you. Just a comment, Breka. I was really impressed with what you're reporting now and also the materials you submitted as part of the council packet. And then the letter you wrote all of us trying to respond to those allegations that were made a couple of meetings ago. Kind of pulling back from that, I'm seeing a lot of growth, a lot of development, particularly with the merger of the chamber and the Economic Development Organization, MADC. And again, from my perspective, a lot has happened, almost all of it in a positive way, since, you know, 15 or 20 years ago. I also like the fact that we're making it a priority of our efforts to support the base and the people who work there. I think sometimes we take it for granted, those people who sacrifice a great deal to protect our country and work under very challenging conditions sometimes. And it makes me feel very good that we're doing our best to support them. It isn't just an economic thing, I think. I was intrigued, too, by the data you presented in your report about what people saw as positive things about the community and negative things in terms of economic development. I was really struck by the fact that workforce availability was one of the key issues. And I think the state is finally trying to deal with that in a productive manner. We have tremendously large number of jobs, and we don't have the people with the skills to fill them. These are particularly technical and trade kind of jobs. And the other thing that was very interesting to me was the, one of the other biggest areas of dissatisfaction in terms of childcare. I think we need to, I think, work even more strongly to make sure that we have a good network of individuals who can provide childcare, high-quality childcare, and that parents have choices out there in terms of where to place their children. That's not a soft issue anymore. It's not a touchy-feely kind of thing. It's not just for do-gooders. We have to take care of children if their parents are to be gainfully employed. So I think that's one area I would pay particular attention to, what can we do? And we are doing something. If Lisa were here, she'd be telling us about the CTE program. But I think that obviously needs to be pushed, continuing to be pushed, and also this issue of childcare. So I'm very pleased with what I'm seeing. I appreciate the information you've given me. Although unfortunately, when you made your presentation now, you threw in a couple of acronyms that I didn't understand. So a little appendix of all these things might be useful. That's one of the problems, I think, with governments. Sometimes we have a program here and a program there and a program here, and it has all these initials and acronyms. And to the outsider, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense, or you'd be reminded what these things mean. But it's good they're out there. Again, I just lobby for as much simplicity as possible, as much transparency, and to make it as easy as possible for people who have good ideas to access the things that are out there and not be stuck in some bureaucracy or some endless loop of program this and program that. But that's a growing pain, I guess. But overall, I'm very pleased and look forward to continued progress in this area.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Terry.
The childcare stuff, so I, has there been minutes from the June 22nd, June 20th meeting? The roundtable, Governor Burgum called?
The governor did put out kind of a summary of that in his weekly newsletter. I could certainly forward that over to be shared with City Council. So as far as with it, we are very fortunate, Elderwoman Evans, to be at the table. The governor, Lieutenant Governor, and Department of Human Services pulled together kind of a working group of about 12 individuals from the state, across the state. Minot had four representatives at the table. Typically, we're not at the table always for those discussions. Fortunately, we have been working hard to make those connections and say that any pilot programs, any kind of funding that could be coming through, we're here. We want to help find a solution for these type of things. Can certainly share that. I don't know if it was, it wasn't really a per se meeting. It was more of a roundtable, so I don't know that minutes were taken. But the governor is in his newsletter.
Yeah, like I've seen the news pieces, you know, and sort of the highlights. But why I ask is just certainly if there's opportunities for the city to partner in with that. I mean, this is a huge issue, and we know impacts the situation, the labor situation in Minot. So I think some cities, you know, are doing creative things to help with childcare. And so certainly, you know, feel free to, I can't promise anything, but, you know, bring us, you know, these ideas and strategies on how to help with this, you know, probably huge retention and recruitment issue.
Mayor Ross and Elderwoman Evans, just to go back, I think this was an acronym that I used, RWIP, which is the Regional Workforce Impact Program. So as far as with it, we've been working with the region to understand what are our greatest challenges and needs. And as far as with it, these are the bullets here, some of the things that were identified. Daycare infrastructure support is one of them. And we don't have the dollar amounts broken out yet, but we will be pulling those together. We anticipate supporting a number of ideas. We put out an RFP, fielded in those requests of how can you expand your programming to expand your services in this space? So we intend to take some of that $1.8 million and allocate it towards that. We also anticipate this next legislative session, there's going to be requests coming through to support workforce initiatives. That's why we're working so hard and so closely with the state to ensure that we understand what those opportunities are and can raise our hand and hopefully find some solutions to those items. So that's why workforce isn't part of per se our agreement, but since I've joined the Chamber EDC, it has been a focus and shift. Because frankly, whether it's our Infrastructure Committee Chair to Energy Chair to the BAC and API Group across the board, we're hearing the challenges that our business community is having in workforce, and we want to do what we can to help support that.
Well, thank you for doing that and bringing it to our attention and, you know, anything we can do to help your efforts, you know.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Breka.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to item 10 on the agenda, Liaison Reports. Let's start with Paul.
Thank you, Mayor. The one board that I, a part of that has met, Visit Minot. Some exciting news through the Tourism Recovery and Resiliency Fund that the city funds in agreement with Visit Minot. Visit Minot's been successful in conjunction with the respective organizations that they partner with. State Dance will be hosted in the City of Minot in 2024, 2025, and 2026. The 2023 North Dakota USA Gymnastics State Championship will be held in Minot for the first time in over a decade. And something that's close to my heart, 2024 Minot State Wrestling Super Regional Tournament will be held in Minot at the Dome. Again, these are events that can't be brought to Minot without Visit Minot and without the cooperation of the organizations that they partner with. It's a team effort. It's a heavy lift to get these organizations and get these types of events here. So I'm excited to see the collaboration and the momentum that's building behind these programs and really seeing some results. All in all, the direct spend estimates through the programs that we plug the numbers into, there'll be more than $3 million direct spend from those events in their time being hosted in Minot, so.
Thank you, Paul. Mark?
No meetings to report on. I would just note that the city
I would just note that the city, county, school, parks liaison committee is going to meet on July 28th.
Roscoe, any liaisons? No. Carrie?
No meetings this week, but I just wanted to remind folks, the fair starts on Saturday, so go out, have yourself a good time, spend some money, go on some rides, go to some concerts, and eat. Okay, that's all I got.
Steve?
Thank you. Variety of things to report. First of all, the Commission on Aging had their monthly meeting this past Friday, I reported, and things seem to be going reasonably well there, except they were not particularly pleased with the tentative or the input from the council in terms of our upcoming budget and their cutbacks. So I encourage them to make their concerns known to the members of the council. They were really surprised by that, and I tried to explain as best as I could what we did and why we did it. In terms of the Emergency Resource Council, we had again our monthly meeting previous Thursday. We didn't have any capabilities briefing. That's where someone presents a discussion of what their organization or agency has in terms of emergency resources and capabilities. One thing that I am working on though with the Central Dispatch people, and will be working with the 911 Committee, is seeing if we can accommodate the offer of the Amateur Radio Club to provide a backup of emergency radio communications. We're building a new dispatch center, a new building obviously, and I want to make sure that, you know, we look carefully, not just locally, but at a state level about the resources these people can bring. If everything collapses, it seems like they're always there. So hopefully, maybe we can string up an antenna for them, or at least let them put up an antenna on our building, and they very much don't want to get in the way, but I think they do have something to offer that we maybe could use. So I'm looking at exploring that further. In terms of the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee, which I serve on, we're having a series of public meetings again, I think in mid-September, mid-August, I'm not sure which is. They'll be publicized to give input into, or at least to present the tentative plans. We had a series of meetings the past couple of weeks, three meetings, one at Hess Oil down, sorry, I mean, down south end of town, one at the Carnegie Center, and one up at Jim Hill, not Jim Hill, Ramstead Junior High, in which community input was actively solicited. We had fairly decent attendance at some of those, and our consultant came in and presented and asked for input, and some citizens were very, very engaged in that process. So again, looking at a 20-year plan for development of land and land use in the community and larger infrastructure issues. So there'll be a chance for further input. There's a website, and those results will be, there'll be another set of meetings to give preliminary feedback and get comments on those. So it's an iterative process. We come up with something, we share it with people, we listen to what they have to say, we develop it further, we present it again. So I'm very optimistic about that, but it's taking a lot of time and effort. The final thing was a more informal level of liaison. I had the privilege a few weeks ago of attending the final session of the Citizens Police Academy. It was a four-session program, three hours a night, one night a week. This is the third or fourth time in 25 years I've attended it. Every time, the content is different, so I don't know if I get credit for it or not on my transcripts, but it was interesting interacting with citizens. We had a very good turnout, and certainly with our law enforcement officers, seeing what they do, the equipment they use, the challenges they face. And I would very strongly encourage everybody on the council to go through that, especially when they first join the council. You learn a lot about it. The officers were very informative, were very friendly, and they interacted very well with the citizens. The dog was really cute, too. So it was a very, very educational experience, although I've repeated it several times, I still learn a lot. And I'm very much looking forward to doing it again sometime in the future, and very, very highly recommend it, unless you're in the businesses, as we say. Somebody like Carrie works with victims and victimized people, or somebody like me who is a forensic psychologist, you really don't have much sense, I think, the average person doesn't have much sense of what law enforcement work and policing really is like, and how incredibly rewarding it can be, and also how challenging and sometimes very dangerous. And again, my heart goes out to people like that who put their lives on the line for us. So this was a good chance to learn more about that. It was a very, very positive experience as always, and again, would very strongly recommend it to others in the future. And I think that's about all I can think of to report on.
Thank you. Lisa?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did attend the bi-monthly Executive Board Meeting of the Service Base and Planning Council, and I think Brazelda, you know, touched on some of the things that we had discussed during that meeting, and I wanted to thank Alderman Janzer for bringing up the Liaison Committee that is coming on the July 28th. It will be a little different this time. We're going to have a morning meeting instead of a noon meeting, and it will be at the Ward County Administrative Building instead of a restaurant. So if there is anyone that is interested in attending, they are more than welcome to be there. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. And just a reminder, this week is City of Minutet Employee Appreciation Week, so I see our staff, some of our staff out there. So on behalf of the council, we appreciate what you do, so. And if you have an opportunity to attend some of the events that were sent out earlier or late last week, I encourage you to do so. Next, that brings us to adjournment. They're moved. Moved by Pittner, second. By Janzer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.